Okay. Good. I like that position. All right. Okay. Six o'clock. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Town of Washington Planning Board. We do have a quorum present, we believe. We have three members here, Richard, Susan, Emily, and we have Jim Cornell on Zoom. If everyone is here, we will say to lunch. Fudge allegiance, Stephen Black, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world. Has everyone received the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
And are there any corrections to the minutes, changes?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So we have one matter on for public hearing tonight, the Woodner matter. That's an application for a special use permit for conversion of a one-bedroom apartment into a two-bedroom apartment for farm employee housing. A second kitchen and bath are going to be added. There's no proposed expansion of the existing building, and at our last meeting, we waived the requirement for a site plan. We also declare the application as a type 2 under SICER. So can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion. Open public hearing.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Just to refresh my memory, what lands anywhere near the change?
Oh, yeah.
No, Jameson, no.
No, there's no one there.
Thank you very much.
So we would ask you to come forward. Have a seat. So because the public hearing, we'd have to briefly just summarize what the application is.
So the applicant is looking to divide an existing legal one-bedroom apartment into two studio apartments. You know, she's looking to provide the opportunity to have farmhands, you know, work or have farmhands have living space on the property. I mean, it's a simple division of, you know, the two, the one building into two. What else is their state? It's pretty basic.
Correct. Aaron, is there anything?
Nothing. Nothing new. You summed it up pretty well from the last meeting. We typed 2d it for SICER, we set the hearing, we talked about the site plan requirements and how you waived that. And even though it is subject to the Ag and Markets, it's also subject to the special permit requirements of the planning board, which is why we're here for this.
Is there any public comment? We don't have any public, I think. Any of board members have any other comments or questions about the application?
This is similar to what was approved at the Millbrook Winery, when they put in a, you know, they put in a portable, a prefabricated structure for housing farm employees. Is this a farm?
Yes.
It's an operating farm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no questions.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close hearing.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, so Sarah has prepared the resolution approving this. Have you had a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Review that? Any comments? No? Okay. So can I get a motion to adopt the resolution as prepared?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're all set.
All set?
Yep. I mean, what, the resolution basically says?
Says you permit.
He'll send you a signed copy that'll be filed with the court, but that's what it was really, it's always great.
So you can take that to Jameson if you want, and he'll give you the, the permit.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
You gotta eat you one.
Yeah, was.
Well, now our workshop matter is not here.
Huh.
Good, let's discuss it, though. Can we discuss it?
No, can we discuss it?
Want to intro?
No.
I mean, you really want the applicant here, so they don't need any information.
All right.
Could be late.
Oh, we'll wait, we'll wait. Because he did send a few letters.
The thing is, he was first on the, on the agenda this time, so he would have seen the agenda, correct?
Not necessarily.
But it's up online. They just know that they're.
I mean, second. Minutes after, so.
Yeah. What was that, Jim?
You said he was, he's second on the agenda, right?
He is, he is now, but the first agenda had him on first, so I thought, well, wouldn't he have been here?
I didn't print the second one, I just made an arrow, switching them.
We just talked about the ZBA, he has to see you guys, so he knows.
He knows that he's. He knows he's on today.
For the height variance, he needs to see us. He has to come up with some, some height variant, some documentation about the height of the eve. Or something over? My truck blew over?
What was that?
That was Mr.
Mr. George.
Yeah. Not a big truck.
Yeah, when he first went out, it was like, boom.
So they didn't, he didn't really submit anything either by the deadline for the meeting, right?
Uh, Brian?
Yeah.
No, no wetland.
So he's not applying for wetlands, right? It doesn't appear he's applying for wetlands.
He doesn't seem to understand.
We could, we, or talk about.
Even though we want to wait.
Here comes somebody.
Nope. It's Mr.
It's the man from Clinton.
Hi.
We're actually waiting for the applicant for Upton Lake to show up. No. Upton Lake School.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, he's from Clinton, planning board. Yes.
Is it possible to get like enough, what are their site plans, they updated the site plan? The applicant, or should I ask?
Yeah, we're looking for that, too.
We're, we're waiting on something.
We're also looking for that.
Were you waiting for that, too?
Yeah.
All right.
If, if there is gonna be one.
And I noticed there's a lot of properties on the other side, your side, that they probably use groundwater, I'm thinking, for drinking water. They look like small property, you don't have municipal water out there, do you?
No.
So the next question is for me, I'm just curious, so you have an aquifer law in your, which would have a buffer?
For the wetlands?
Yeah. Well, just a buck which has an aquifer and would have a buffer for surrounding the aquifer.
Okay.
So that you protect the groundwater in the aquifer that people use for drinking.
What, is there the wells close by?
There might be an aquifer up there, I think I wish Matthew would look at.
Okay.
It wouldn't be them so much, it would be all those little parcels next to it that would have wells down into that aquifer. If, if it's.
Okay.
You have to find which map you have, because these maps are all over the place with the aquifers.
We're trying to straighten that out.
Yeah. But it just occurred to me that they, all these people live on the other side of the line, and they would use well water, and well water.
These things all on, while we just hang out.
That's what they're using.
They are on.
Don't really feel.
I'm sure if you, just somebody who must look at that stuff on their side.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just a status update and, well.
So where are you guys on your, on your, are you basically?
What did that, I'm not sure.
Workshop right now?
Get this to call attention so I can make a statement.
I believe it's still on the workshop.
What's that?
Okay, so. To make a statement, then we received these letters, you know, the DEC and Army Corps of Engineers, and that, as, if it applies, our wetlands law applies.
So we're going to make that statement without the applicant here?
Yeah, you can do that. And then it'll be in the minutes.
Oh, okay, I missed that, I'm sorry.
He would show up, and then we can have the communication with them. But even if he's not here, we could say he's scheduled for a workshop, the board's making these comments, and then we put him in the minutes, and then Aaron or the council can contact him.
Okay. Okay. So we're back.
Right. Well, there's two issues that we talked about last month, right? One was having the fire department of both municipalities, Clinton and Millbrook Fire Departments, weigh in on the access road proposed around the buildings. We did get feedback from both of them, and they both seem to be in agreement that it's not necessary, primarily due to the constraints that would be behind the structures between the buildings and the slopes that are back there. I'm not an expert in firefighting, but the collapse zone is a concern, in that you can get, if, you know, you're in the collapse zone and you could technically get stuck back there between the slopes and the building by debris, if there's apparatus back there. So they don't think it's necessary, they think they can still fight a fire adequately without it. So that's important, because that eliminates any disturbance to the entry road, going off the entry road, which would be very close to the Clinton line and the Clinton Wetlands authorities, right? So if that goes away, it's really just the work they're proposing in the parking lot area that's adjacent to your wetland buffer, that would be still the outstanding thing. They are in front of the ZBA still for the height, and I think it was the Millbrook Fire Department raised a concern about the height, they're not really understanding the roof height and the pinch and the eaves were. Yeah, so I told Mr. Bowie to reach out to them and just meet with them about that, so they can understand better what's happening. I think he can, that's fine to do on his own, and he can report back, or we can hear back from the chief on that. So that's still at the ZBA. The ZBA is waiting for the planning board to do SICER, which relies a lot on what's this plan gonna look like, is the access road in or out? It sounds like it's out. So my recommendation for.
It's out, it's right, it's right, it's right, but the applicant hasn't agreed that it's out, and hasn't, hasn't revised.
I'm sure, sure, if the town is saying we don't really need it, that he would be willing to save his client some money.
Into it in some way, though. But I was not understanding.
Yeah, so we'll, we have to talk about it, but I think if he, my advice would be to direct him to remove that from the plan. Amend the site plan to take that out, and then apply for the wetlands permit that we've pretty much determined is necessary for the parking lot.
If he left the park or the parking lot that's in the buffer untouched, in other words, he revises his plan and leaves it, the park that's in, in the buffer untouched, and only improves the lot, the parking, where it's out of the buffer, could we, then, can he, can, can he then proceed without a wetlands permit?
Technically, by what the code says, yeah. But I think his idea is they want to formalize that parking lot, paved it, striped it, stormwater.
What he's heading into, because he has the means to, to put that parking lot somewhere else on the property without entering that buffer. And so we would, I won't say how we would rule, but we would be not so open to, open to having that parking lot be improved that way as on his plan. So he may run into a situation where it's not worthwhile going for a wetlands permit. Maybe he should just, I understand, that he can relocate part of that parking lot out of the buffer, and save himself a lot of trouble.
That's true.
It's hard to know how much we can save him, because it seems that he's a little bit confused about our wetlands law versus DEC and federal, and as long, as long as he doesn't have DEC or federal wetlands, he's okay, or, and he doesn't seem to.
So he sent a couple of emails to Kristen, and I think with all of us copied, maybe not all of us, but I was definitely on the emails, showing evidence, he had email correspondence with DEC and Army Corps. I was impressed, actually, that he was able to get Army Corps to respond, because they don't, very quickly, out of the city office. But, you know, they, they both were saying, yeah, oh, we don't have jurisdiction, we knew that already from day one on this, and it's not, that doesn't matter, it's the town, this is, that stream and that pond, it's really the stream in this case, it's the concern, because the buffer for the stream's impact is going over to the parking lot. It's, it's mapped on the town's wetlands and water course map, so it's subject to the town wetlands law. That's it. So, and that requires a permit.
Said that, or.
Yeah.
I thought we did.
And I, I called him, and I left a message, because he called me and I missed his call, but I relayed basically what I just summarized to you, the two issues of the road and the permit, and that the Army Corps and DEC correspondence is pretty much useless for the board. And I didn't hear back from him. So, I mean, that's where we stand now, is, I think, advising him to remove the road, and, you know, consider the parking lot, either amending it or going forward with a wetlands permit.
Very good.
Yeah. I mean, those are his choices, either move the parking lot, and they seem to have a lot of land there. Or.
And create a turnaround loop. So he's got the land there to do it.
Is that him? I'm gonna pick up.
So that's my summary. I guess we can wait now.
Let's wait a few more minutes. I don't know what the appropriate amount of time to wait for somebody is, really.
Has Steve Moreno been consulted on this?
Oh, yeah. Not until, I think it would be appropriate until an application comes in for him to get involved. But, um, yeah, so far he hasn't been looped in on this.
This application is taking a very long time, though. I mean, it's, and it's very pondered.
It is.
This is one, it's up in, he's, he's going, you know, seems like it goes in all different directions.
I think it's hard for us to make any determinations when we don't have a set plan.
That's what I mean.
Plan is not.
It's like, it's like we're helping, we're part of the planning process. Both of being presented with the plan, and so it seems to, he's finding his way through.
The last meeting, we did make a suggestion about relocating the parking out of the buffer, and we had concerns about the road, and we addressed those, and he, he, he was gonna come here with a revised plan, or, or ask for a wetlands permit.
Somebody's coming.
There he is.
Hello.
Hi.
Come join us.
You're up.
Come join us.
How's everyone, how's everybody doing? Good to see everybody.
Yeah.
Our other matter ended very quickly, so.
If you speak up, we'll.
Yeah, sorry, I'm wearing a mask, so, tonight, but I'm, I'm not set, I'm just.
All right. Printout. Just to discuss. So I've been working with my site planning engineer hard on just trying to fit everything into this nice little puzzle. So what, what you see here, that the red line represents the 100-foot buffer line, to kind of put everything into perspective. What, we've tried to take a look at moving parking lots around and trying to fit the spaces, we found it difficult to do that and still fit everything into the property line. If you take a look, one of the things is we've got the existing school that happens to run right through that line as well. That really is the, really the only area for us to be able to put the playground. Playground right now is currently, if you take a look at those two dotted squares, those dash squares, is where the proposed new septic area is. And what I don't want to do is, I don't want to build and put any kind of fixed septic, or, excuse me, playground equipment over top of the septic itself. A lot of the playground stuff requires digging and pouring concrete and whatnot. And the area to be able to stay anywhere remotely away from the buffer line is right there. If we go to the far right, we have the other septic that's taking care of the elementary school and the church sanctuary.
Where's that one, where's that septic? This.
Yeah, so. Yeah, that's, so that's a septic field there. So it's the ideal area. If I go even farther to the left, where I've got written the proposed playground, that's a soccer field to, to that left there. So, you know, I do realize that, however, it's gonna happen, that I am cutting into that buffer line somewhere, whether, when I'm taking down the old building, there's gonna be work proposed there. What I'm also looking to do is remove the existing septic system that's sitting, it's probably small, but existing septic system is sitting right in that little area where the triangle is, yeah. So I want to be able to, if we were, we're looking to have a clean, a clean area, I'm gonna end up having to do some work in that, in that buffer area. Also, we had talked about what to do with the parking spaces, and literally what ends up happening is I would end up taking pretty much a, a good 50% of the parking space away if I were to try to move it into any other location, and I haven't been able to fit anything in any other area of, of the property. And same thing with our site engineer, same thing, trying to get it to flow freely around. The other thing that I did do was, I did, if you notice, as far as on the right-hand side, moved the access road out of the buffer area. I'm still looking to.
Are you still looking to have that, despite the fire departments?
Yeah, and I think the two reasons is, there is an existing propane tank that serves the elementary school, which is located into this back corner here, located, maybe over here, which we still, I mean, they're not getting it serviced every day, but I'm, I'm assuming that it's probably once a month, they're probably getting, they're getting a propane delivery. They also have.
How are they getting that now without a road?
Right now, what they're doing is, they're able to, my gun in here, they're able to pull the truck right up, because this is all parking lot space, they're able to pull the truck up here, and then drag the hose down in spot right here.
Couldn't they continue to do that?
Well, they wouldn't, there wouldn't be enough, because they're, we're looking to make a connection to the building, so that the crystal couldn't have free flow back and through, so we wouldn't have room there. So, and there's also the oil tanks here, so whether I have full access all the way around, it's from, from a utilitarian, you being able to maintain fuel, being able to come into the building comfortably.
I think keeping the road out of the buffer is good.
Yeah. And just be able to do regular maintenance on it.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's good.
Is there a way to maybe just have the road start here and kind of end here, instead of doing it from here all the way around? You know, maybe just having the access start here, go to the spot where you have the utility issues, and just kind of end it there?
Yes, nice.
Instead of making go all the way around?
Sure, sure. I mean, that's. That's all feasible, you know, I think.
That's a really good idea. It could save, you know, earthwork costs and everything else, retaining wall, so.
That would be a nice, yeah, you could back out of that, so.
I, I know.
Actually, all he would need to do is get to somewhere around here and run his line up there.
Correct. I think if the fuel guys would be able, just to be able to just to back their truck up to a point, because I think they have some 100 or 150 feet of line on.
You do have a little extra room back here that you could even make a pull-in, so they could turn their truck.
Exactly, exactly.
That might be the way to do it.
Rather than go all the way around. Yeah. So let me ask you, you don't think it's possible to extend this parking lot straight out like this, huh? Like, do, build it up in there?
So I could get, you know, certainly I can get a few parking spots in there, but the, really, what I'm concerned about is really this whole area really ends up being cut, cut out, because there's, there's still a flow of being able to back in, park, and then pull back out again. I still have, so the flow of, of buses or traffic being able to pull in and out. So, yes, in fact, I would say that we can get a few cars here, but I can't get the 22 cars if I'm gonna be able to give them a playground again. And that, and what that does, that keeps me completely out of the areas.
So let me play with you a little, just, I'm just playing.
Sure, sure.
So say you took this big gap here and closed it, and then have a lawn or something that 10 feet in there, maybe 1 feet to 2 feet, and that would let a vehicle back out and move, if you move this all this way. And you need eight spaces over here, or 10 spaces, and that, then those cars can go just like this and turn around in that space, right? And you're basically moving this parking lot right attached to this, and it's totally out of the buffer.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, and then I have, I have my.
Engineer.
Engineer who studies traffic flow and.
Yeah, I understand. Spaces and stuff like that.
We're just, we're just giving some ideas, but.
I'm just throwing out an idea.
And this.
And he would, you would have to communicate that, see if it was possible. I'm not saying to do that, I'm not saying anything like that. It just seems feasible to me. And the reason that's important, that if, if we feel that it's feasible, that you can move that parking lot, then that will give us reason not to allow a permit.
One of, one of the.
The other issue, though, is the, Richard, is the subsurface stormwater infiltration chambers, but they have, what he has marked there, that still might be necessary.
Right.
Even with moving spaces, right? And that, that's disturbing in the buffer. So, that's the thing. Like, it might be unavoidable.
Yeah, so.
If that doesn't get moved along with the parking.
Right.
You were dissecting, I didn't hear what he said.
The stormwater infiltration.
Yeah. It's like dotted line.
That has to move as well.
It's under the parking.
Yeah. Any disturbance there is gonna require a wetlands permit. So you make the decision of whether you want to keep it like this and apply for a wetlands permit, because you definitely would have to, under this scenario.
And my hope was, I ended up having to have a, a family issue that I had a deal with down, you know, Florida, so I didn't get a chance to get their wetland permit in, and my intention is to do that, because, because the thing is, I'm recognizing, no matter what I do, if, if I'm working to take the house down, I'm, I'm.
You're digging in the wetlands. You're digging up anyway.
If I'm, if I'm, if I'm taking and gonna remove the septic out of there and bring it back to grass again, same thing, even if any kind of a traffic flow in there, the other thing is, I know that we're gonna have to bring in approximately an 800-amp service into the building itself, because there's an existing 800-amp service that came through for the other building, and we're gonna need to do the same thing again, and whether it becomes overhead and crosses over the water area, I bet I'm not 100% sure yet. At this point, my, my intentions are to not even, be remotely close to the water itself.
So, so let me just, so for your information and knowledge, that when you apply for a wetlands permit, you will need to have. that when you apply for a wetlands permit, you will need to have a wetland specialist that we can recommend go out and delineate the buffer. The wetlands in the buffer, they'll flag it. Then your surveyor will actually refine this line. So, things change after a while.
Sure.
So maybe you'll get lucky and the wetlands buffer is out of your picture there, so.
May not be quite as close as you'd say.
May not be a problem.
So this map is obviously, a delineator didn't put the stream in there, it was just part of the survey.
You would either hire somebody to do that, or you can have the person that works for us do it, and then they, you pay that fee for that. And I think sometimes that works out a little bit cheaper to do it that way, because-
Whatever's easier for everybody, as far as-
That's all part of the application, you'll see it when you-
Just so you know, there's some expense for you in applying for the permit, for the survey, for survey work and the wetland specialist or a person to go delineate the wetland, the buffer.
Right, but I've already spent tens of thousands of dollars in the last five months here, so at this point, I mean, truth is, I don't, unless I keep the building, the existing building, and don't even touch it, right? Then it can say, okay, we work on this parking lot thing, and that's the real issue in here. But I, I just don't see, no matter, because the last time, even, even when I was just six feet into the line, you guys had a difficulty with it, right? So if that be the case there, then, then even if I'm six feet over here-
Let me ask Howard, how do you view, if he's removing a building that's in the buffer and restoring it, in other words, restoring the land, and they plant the appropriate grass and do whatever they're doing it, is, is that restorative work considered a benefit through wetlands or, you know, wetland law or anything like that? Or is it still a disturbance that we have to work on?
Well, it's probably a disturbance, or it's a beneficial disturbance. It would be up to whoever it is, the specialist, evaluating that, to weigh it in the balance. So it depends on what he's disturbing at the moment. But generally, the rule is wetlands that have nothing in them are the most healthy wetlands, generally, that's generality. So that would be whoever's evaluating this, be it Steve Marino or somebody else, to weigh all of that in the balance. But I personally would say if you remove things out of a wetlands and put them back in natural order, it's probably a benefit. But I'm not the one that says that.
So, that's what I'm trying, trying to say, is we may look at that as a benefit and not, and not be object to it.
So, that's how I'm seeing it too, is that I'm not trying to add, I'm trying to take away. Percentage for, for positive takeaway septic, that's their takeaway.
All of that helps your application, you're going to do a wetlands application, and all of that is stuff that gets weighed. You'll see, you'll read through the wetlands law, and you'll see all the different factors that get considered. So all of that goes into the evaluation of whether the board will say, okay, yeah, that's fine.
And as you guys, some of you already might know that I've gone through and spoke with the Army Corps of Engineers. We've realized, it takes a while to actually get responses back.
The only thing is, those things don't matter for our wetlands law. Like, we already knew that this is not a DEC wetland, and this is not an Army Corps of Engineer thing. The wetlands that we care about, because we have to by the law that was passed in this town, are delineated on a wetland map in the town. There are certain maps that say, okay, this is a wetland for the purposes of this law, and that's what we're looking at. And so whether it's, most of the wetlands, wetlands around here are not federal wetlands, or some of them are.
But you had DEC and Army Corps on the application, so it still had to go through-
Yes, they have different criteria, though.
Criteria say, okay, what, how to look at it. In my mind, I'm thinking, well, gee, you know, if, if Army Corps of Engineers, that's all they deal with is environment, and if the DEC, if all they do is deal with environment, and if their restrictions are pretty high, but what the town has put on there has doubled or tripled what their restrictions are. In other words, DEC doesn't look, they say, look, if it's within fifty feet, all right, then we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it. Army Corps says, unless we're actually sticking a shovel in the water or doing something, right? And neither of them look at it as a wetland.
That's our law, it's more restrictive. We're looking at a hundred foot from, from a wetland, we look at-
Watercourses.
Wetlands, watercourses, all sorts of things that are just not in their purview. And I think that was the intention of the law when it was passed in this town was, oh, look, nobody's protecting these wetlands or, or watercourses, these smaller things, and so that's why we're going to pass a local law.
Makes sense, makes sense. And I get it, you don't want to be there, it's, it's a free, to do whatever you want, whenever you want, there's got to be some kind of water and stuff like that, so, yeah.
So, my question then for the board would be, do you want to engage Steve Marino now, before the application, so that he can maybe go out to the site, meet with the applicant, and maybe do the delineation ahead of time? But see if it's how far we are in the buffer and then advise from there?
I think that's a good idea. The only thing that I start to worry about then is fees. You know, Steve Marino, the minute he starts, then there's a fee involved. And if we don't yet have a wetland application-
Who's Steve Marino?
He's the town's wetlands consultant, it's on call.
This is all that you guys hire out, so I would be able to use him as well?
Be able to use him to delineate, he will delineate the wetlands.
He'll meet with you on site.
For you and us.
That'd be great. And you would, you would pay his fee?
Sure, sure. So, is that, have we done that before, where we've hired him before? There's an application in front of us?
No, not in my, almost here.
If he goes out there and does work, and then the applicant doesn't come through with an application, then how are we?
I think, but I think that what he's talking about is really a request for a delineation, which might sit outside of this process, but is still beneficial to the extent that the applicant then comes back with a wetland permit, because then we know what we're actually talking about.
Yeah, I mean, if, if this red line moves, anyway.
It could potentially move out of them.
He could contact Steve Marino and hire him to delineate the buffer.
Well, technically, he's the town's on-call consultant, so I think it would be more appropriate for the town to request services, or?
Yes, but I think that that fee would be applied as parents' fee or our fee would be applied to the application. And I think it would answer whether or not he needs the wetlands. So it could save in the end, or intelligently determine that, yes, you're in it, you're in it fifteen feet, and no amount of moving is going to change that, so submit the permit and then continue the process.
I mean, that's what I'm already assuming that needs to be done. So whatever the process is, so we don't delay it for months on end.
So I'm just trying to now do this as streamlined as possible for you, if you're going to go that way. So, what we're trying to do here is get you to use the specialist, Steve Marino, before the next meeting, so we can see where the buffer is.
That'd be fantastic. Is he also a surveyor?
No, he's not, no. Flag it. And then you get your surveyor out there, and he'll put it on this, got it, got it. And it may move, it may move.
But I believe you then need to have a surveyor do it as well.
Yes, yeah, she does, she does.
She has to shoot the flags.
He'll plot the flags.
So, okay, so about my comment about the access road maybe just being cut in half, per se, like, and kind of starting here and ending instead of starting over here? Are you willing to entertain that? Because we want Steve to have the latest plan.
Is, am I encroaching on something, or?
My only thought is that, just, I don't know, it's a lot, the fire department already weighed in and said they don't think it's necessary. It could save you working with the town of Clinton, because you're right, you know, right there on the coast of the buffer, that would serve, that would be in their jurisdiction, you know?
Yes, and for me, oh, honestly, it's not, truth is, it's really me that was more pushing it more than the school. Just from thirty-six years of building, knowing how the flow of things are, it's just trying to create something really nice for them. Because they've never actually ever had it ever, or whatever it is. But so if, I would say I'm not stuck by it by any means. So, it's the fact is, if, like you guys pointed out, you have a possibility of being able to back up and come around there, and if they had something they can back up and pull out, I'm, I'm ticked the tank by that, and that would be fantastic, so.
Okay. It should save a lot of money.
It's a lot of retaining wall there.
That's a huge amount of money that would be saved on that.
Because it's a steep slope right there.
Yes.
The slope is steep on this, but there's a little ravine, and it's not that bad right here. But still, it's, it's, it's mine, it's two, four, six, eight feet.
So, we could engage Steve Marino. You can revise this plan, and you can meet with him possibly between now and the next meeting to delineate, and maybe you can have a plan submitted, or at least bring to the meeting the latest scheme.
I'll be able to get it within that two-week time period, you know, by the time of meeting Steve Marino out there and getting a surveyor and everything else.
Bring whatever you have, bring whatever.
Well, no, I think we don't need an application submitted, though, that-
Yeah.
That could start, that would, that would start the process.
I would start that. Why don't you start working on the application simultaneously to having him go out and delineate it?
Pretty much have it all filled out, have it with me already for most of it.
Submit the application, Kristen, or write the wetland permit, and then we'll get going, you'll be able to move along here.
So I'll get, I'll submit what I have at this point, you know, there might be a couple of small things, like, for example, waiting on Steve Marino. So I can, I can submit what I do have as far as-
Right, and that'd be great, because then we can authorize Steve Marino to go out.
Okay, so with this, do I talk, contact Kristen? She's going to give me the contact permission for Steve, we'll set that up.
And we'll contact Steve, right, and just let him know that-
I can help with that.
Yeah, I can give him your contact.
Okay.
I can, I can help with contact, getting Steve looped in, I can email him, send him this. Do you have a copy of this PDF you can send soon?
There are two things I just want to bring up to attention to you is, one is I am dealing with a traffic control specialist for the town of Clinton. And once that information gets all through, I'll bring a copy in here as well. The other thing that was brought up was the, on the variance board, they had mentioned, one, the two fire departments looked at it. One of them mentioned that they were concerned, not with the actual overall height of the building, but with the E plate, which is proposed at twenty-five feet. And truth be told, even if we were doing a flat roof, it's still going to be right around that twenty-five feet. Because if you do, if you do the math on it, typically a commercial ceiling, commercial ceiling is ten foot. So you've got ten foot between floors, and you have two feet between it for your, your structure, that's twenty-two feet right there. And then if I'm, if I'm two to three feet of foundation on the ground-
Parpet, too.
A lot of the new, a lot of the new houses, they're, they're building with nine-foot wall height to begin with. The twenty-five feet is really not-
So their issue was to be able to place a ladder, right?
Well, he said, I think his name is Ted Bonus? And if, what, I didn't get a chance to speak with him, I sent an email out to try to contact him, and it's not available, tried to even make contact in Millbrook offices, there's nobody there to answer anything. So I have not, I wanted to be able to connect with him to say, hey, let's put our heads together, what is it that you're looking for, and how can we make this work, right? So, what I'm thinking, what I'm understanding is they have a twenty-eight-foot extension ladder is what they have on the truck, which typically as a builder, that's what I, what I have, which gives you a twenty-five feet working height, right?
To get to the roof.
Right, and then when you're on the roof, it's walkable all the way around. One of the things, if you guys read, read the minutes on it, he had said that they wouldn't use the access road because they typically like to have one and a half times the distance if the building burns and collapses, something like that. So I, so I get that part of it. Don is the other fire inspector, I think he's for Clinton Corrus. Fire chief, he didn't have a problem on his end of it, but. Anyway, so it's really a matter of trying to work with him as far as figuring out what makes sense. But I don't, I don't see the E plate going any less than twenty-five unless I can sink the building in the ground, but I, I need to get pitch in order to get my septic to flow outside. So there's going to be a little bit of height there. Yeah, I don't want it to be high out of the ground either, because of looking at handicap accessibility. My preference would be to bring it as low as possible and bring it right in, because even still, there's going to be an elevator lift that goes from this building down to that building for handicapped children, and-
Well, maybe talk to Ted Bonus, I think that's the next thing.
Maybe my message, I should get back to you.
I've tried calling Millbrook, and there's nobody there, and even when I look up the chief, it's another, somebody else's name. So I have no contact information outside of being able to email him, and I've tried that and haven't gotten back.
Well, he knows Kristen well, he always responds through your emails. Do you want to connect them via email, maybe? Mr. Bovey and Chief, yeah. And that he wants, he's trying to reach him, and maybe that'll help? Just a thought. Might just get a lot of emails and things that's spam or something.
From my own knowledge, what does it say, we're back on the wetland, what does it say in there, does it say no work, no, how does that, how is that?
Ground disturbance?
Because, for example, I know that they mow the lawn right up to the stream, right? Is mowing considered work in the buffer, right?
Digging, excavating, so digging, excavating, building.
Disturbing topsoil is explicitly listed in the code.
Sure, it must be a certain amount of topsoil. Obviously, I'm not looking to get picked by-
There is some sort of a size constraint, I think, if it's so tiny, but, but nothing you're doing is so-
Right, right. And so, for example, this, their existing house, I know that over the years, they had remodeled that, they put new replacement windows in, they built with that. Would they have been required technically to get a wetlands permit if they were doing remodel? No, it would be extra, or let's say, for example, it's-
If they weren't in the ground, if they weren't disturbing the ground, they really-
If there weren't anything in a foundation or a room or anything like that, so they weren't required.
If they did add a room, of course, that would be different. But also, that would have, our law's only been in effect since 2011, I think. So if they did work prior to that, it wasn't even a law.
So it's really, once you break through the topsoil, as I said, and just start disturbing, that's really when it comes to questions like that?
Yeah, and Steve, another benefit of working with Steve is that he helped write the law, so he knows it pretty well, so.
And that's it. I really appreciate you guys for working with me and helping me along the way on this, and it's been a journey.
Get me out, you guys.
It's, it's a work in progress, right? And we're, we're getting there, we're making headway, we're, you know, hitting each thing here and going along here. We're right down the nitty-gritty now.
Yeah.
There's light at the top. Thanks again.
There's only, well, procedurally, obviously, there's SEACER that's still out there. It sounds like we're going to get some traffic information soon. This still would require referral to the county, but the site plan is nearly, it's still kind of a moving target. So I'd rather we wait until it's updated, and maybe, you know, you have the wetland delineation in there, you have the access road revised, and then we can do the county referral. It takes thirty days, we can do it between meetings when it's ready. I think that's it for now, I can't, and a public hearing, but that's down the road, so.
A public hearing, where, I mean, where, in the grand scheme of things, where are you guys seeing that, if we're moving this more like in the May-June timeframe?
Depends on how the wetlands-
Next month is April, yeah, it's going to be at least the May.
If we didn't have the wetlands issues, we'd be flying through this. So the wetlands is the-
Sticky one.
The sticky one, right? And that'll have its own public hearing as well, so maybe combine them, I don't know. But the site plan approval, you know?
But the key thing is having a firm plan. This is what we're doing, because we really can't schedule any public hearings. We can't move to those next steps until we have this firm plan, we send it to the county, we, all those things, then we can set up a public hearing.
So there's going to be two public hearings?
I think it could be one.
We could combine, right?
Yeah, it would be one for the planning board's actions, which are site plan approval and wetland permit.
And you guys are kind of spearheading for the variance as well?
Well, the ZBA process is there in a public hearing still that's being continued and continued until you have SEACER concluded from the planning board, because they're an involved agency for the environmental review under SEACER, and they can't take action until the lead agency whose planning board acts on environmental determination. So, I think if you get this issue with the roof squared away with the chief in Millbrook, the ZBA will probably just be like, all right, we're waiting for the planning board, and they might not even want you to come to the meetings until that's ready, so.
Well, Crystal, I'll look for the phone number from you, if I can, you can email that to me. If I can, if you can email that to me, that would be great, for Ted.
Rich, oh, yeah, you have the email.
Nobody wants his phone number.
Phone number, because he hasn't responded back to my email.
I don't know that I have his.
I was thinking you could, you could just connect them by email.
Yeah.
The chief and Mr. Bovey, connect them by email and to say he has some questions about your comments and-
Yeah, okay.
Can you connect?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Good? Once again, thank you for everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Thanks. You guys got copies?
Yes.
Yes, thank you for that. Like the red one, it's very helpful.
And why does her, on the last variance meeting, you mentioned him yourself very well?
Thank you, I appreciate you.
She always does.
I'm going to ask the whole audience.
Okay, so does anyone have anything else that's not on the agenda? No? Okay, so I would ask for a motion to close the, to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor? Good night and God bless. Hi, Jim.